My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wayne. Okay, we'll have roll call. We don't have a clerk yet. Where'd she go?
Should we take a five-minute break?
Kathy, where are you? I'll be calling you. Would you be so inclined as to have roll call, please? Where'd she go now?
Did we lock you out? We actually had a homeless person come use our planning commission last week unbeknownst to anybody. And we came, we got word of it and we came in here and they were sitting right in that seat making phone calls.
They are probably long distance, too.
Probably to some of their buddies back in prison somewhere.
And when we came in, we, I mean, she left so abruptly that we didn't have a chance even, you know, talk to her, ask her questions, or see if we can help her out. I mean, she just balked it out of her. But anyway, we do have locks on the planning commission doors, though, so.
Bullson prison to talk to. Okay, we'll try again, Kathy. Roll call.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. Okay, EJ, it says you're going to report to the planning commission and tell us what's going on countywide.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the commission. I'm EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. I have just a couple items to report on. The Sheridan Community Plan update, that was, went to the Board of Supervisors on October 7th. Just prior to that item being heard, we had one board member that had unexpectedly had to leave. And so the board continued, they decided to continue that item so they could have all five board members hear that. So the new meeting is set for November 4th with the Board of Supervisors.
What was the item?
The Sheridan Community Plan update.
Oh, okay.
It's been set back a couple months because of that. And let's see, our Board of Supervisors, they just met up in Tahoe this week. There weren't any land use items that they took action on. However, they did get an update on several Tahoe projects and the Tahoe area plan update as well. So for you folks, the next planning commission hearing is scheduled for November 13th. And right now, that looks to be like a full agenda. We have Placer Vineyards specific plan amendment. That's what we're having a workshop on today. We're anticipating that will be going in November for you to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Riolo Vineyards, their specific plan amendment. We also expect that to go in November. They're also making some changes. And the winery ordinance, we hope to do the final workshop for the ordinance at that meeting. We've been to all of the MACs with the exception of the Forest Hill Forum. That's being scheduled right now, so by the time we meet, we should have visited all the MACs and have comments to share with you. Then the last item is one that we're asking for a continuance on today. It's a map and conditional use permit modification down in Granite Bay. So it's going to be a full agenda. There's going to be a lot of material to review. There's environmental documents, addendums associated with both the specific plan amendments. So we'll do our best to get you a planning commission packet as far ahead of time as possible so you can have time to review all that information. And that's what I have for my report unless you have any questions.
Do you have any dates for December yet?
We do have a December date and there will probably be something on that agenda. Kathy, what is that? The 11th.
December 11th?
Yeah, so just, right.
We're only in one meeting in November.
One meeting in November, one meeting in December.
I have a conservancy meeting that day.
On the 11th? Okay, we'll make note of that.
I'll try and change it if I can, but it may be too late now.
As we get closer to that date, we'll let you know what's proposed for that agenda. Well, you can make both. Yeah, that's important. And Ken, Rich?
I was okay until we moved into December.
Perfect. That helps us out.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any questions from anyone to EJ? I guess you're free.
I'm not going far.
Okay, at this time, we offer the public an opportunity to address the commission and ask questions if they choose to make comments on anything other than the items that are on the agenda. So if there's anyone out there that would choose to chat with us, please come forward. Seeing no one, then we'll move on to our 1005 item, which was modification for Boulder subdivision. EJ?
Thank you. So this item, it's the Say residence. It's in the Boulder subdivision down in the Granite Bay area. Request for subdivision modification, map modification. And we're asking that you continue this item to the next planning commission meeting with a time certain. The property was not noticed with a public notification signs. And so we need to make sure that's taken care of before the next hearing within the 10 days that they need to be posted. So that's what our request is, and we would ask that you make that motion.
And do you want to continue to attend certain December 11th?
Yeah, and right now, are we looking at 10:20, Kathy? 10:20 on November 13th.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second to continue that item. And the time was again, I'm sorry?
10:20.
10:20, okay. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience care to comment on this? Seeing no one coming forward, all those in favor? Oh, roll call, please. Forgot our new rules. Yes. So that's a sit-down thing. I'm curious, maybe I'll turn to our astute county council and ask why we at the state level have to do that and we don't do it at, say, at TRPA, for example. Why wouldn't that rule affect everyone if there is one?
Oh, the roll call.
Oh, I don't know what the bylaws offer TRPA. I think we asked for roll call. It's the most prudent way of determining what the vote is. You don't have to do it by roll call. For example, you could have asked for the ayes and the nays.
Oh, I see, okay. I'm just curious. I'm sorry to belabor it. I just, I don't think we do it at the conservancy, which is a state agency, so. Okay, on with business. The next item, which is shown to be heard at 10:10, which we happen to be. Question? Ken?
Yeah, and on this next item, I do have property in the project area, so I do have to recuse myself. But I'll sit out in the audience since we're not, there's no action taken on it today.
Thank you. Okay, we are having a workshop on Placer Vineyards specific plan amendment. ESPNA 201, 30242. And welcome.
Thank you. Well, good morning, commissioners. As EJ mentioned before, my name's Michelle Kingsbury. I am one of the newest members of the planning team here at Cedra. Came over this year from facilities and spent some time, lengthy time, at the redevelopment agency before its dissolution. So I'm happy to be here. The item before you today is a workshop. What we'd like to do is kind of introduce you to the proposed specific plan amendments for Placer Vineyards with anticipation of coming back to you in November, seeking your recommendation. There's a timeline and schedule that's included at the end of the PowerPoint. But ultimately, we'd like to be at the board on December 9th, seeking approval for these amendments. And bear with me, I'm not the best clicker on a PowerPoint. I'm going to flip to the map, actually. As you're aware, Placer Vineyards was originally approved back in 2007. It's about 5,230 acres. I think up here is in the city of Roseville, the Sierra Vista specific plan. Down here is, which are here in November, Riolo Vineyards specific plan. We've got Sutter County over in that area, but it's generally located in the southwestern portion of unincorporated Placer County. It was envisioned, kind of during that robust economy that was going forward before the Great Recession. So over 14,000 residential units planned, over 3 million square feet of commercial and retail square footage, largely, as you see, centered around these main baseline road. It's about approximately over 30,000 population of residents that was envisioned for this specific plan area. There were standalone park facilities, a very robust program of parks, over 6.2 acres of active parkland per thousand residents, which is about 1010 acres of active parks. You'll see in these areas lots of open space, trails that were planned, mini parks, community parks, all dispersed throughout the plan area. And one of the key elements, too, was originally approved during that robust economy was where all the core backbone infrastructures, who may recall, was planned to be initially installed up front. That's basically your spine of all the infrastructure. It was a significant investment that was planned for that infrastructure. However, as you're aware, the recession hit and a lot's changed since then. And as EJ mentioned to you earlier, you know, we're looking and retooling quite a few of the specific plans and looking at ways to make them more financially feasible in today's marketplace. So you'll see with the proposed amendments, a lot of those are geared toward really making this project financially feasible to construct, also over a longer term to maintain with the fees and programs that are in place. A couple actions have occurred on this specific plan previously. Back in February, there was approval to allow for phasing of the core infrastructure. So originally, it was all supposed to be installed up front, but the economy changed. And with that, kind of how you develop changed, too, with this project. So that now we allow for phasing of the infrastructure improvements. So for instance, as each property comes forward, they'll be phasing those improvements in more of a linear path, kind of typical subdivision development, where you just kind of proceed along the path and put those major improvements in. Back in September 2012, I consider these more technical amendments that were approved. They looked at reducing the requirement from 100% to 75% of the participating property owners to do amendments to the plan, as well as changed, or more so implemented, the land equalization program in the original development agreement back in 2007. It was more of an action item to come back of how that program would be implemented. As you see, there's a significant amount of open space, parks, you name it, that's to be dedicated and it's more to equalize amongst the developers, so one's not overburdened and another one's underburdened. But those were the key actions that have occurred that amended the development agreements previously. Switch forward. Basically what we're here today, and I'll go, it's a lengthy list, but we'll go through it rather quickly, is the proposed changes to the specific plan. One of the major ones is looking at the park acreage. As I mentioned previously, the original plan provided for 210 acres of active parkland. With this proposal, it's proposed to be reduced down to five acres per thousand residents. That equates to about 159 acres of active parkland. And how they accomplished that was eliminating what we call mini parks and consolidating those with the neighborhood parks and, but keeping the community parks. They also looked at opportunities to consolidate facilities to minimize those long-term operation costs. Originally, there were standalone facilities for the youth, rec centers, et cetera. And those are now all combined into one facility that would be located in the West Community Park. We're also looking for opportunities with joint use facilities with the school district. The developer will provide in these amendments 139 acres of active parkland. And we're looking for credit of 18 to 20 acres in an in-loofe that we can then use with the school district as they're bringing their facilities online to help partner in those joint use and help minimize on both sides, kind of doing things more efficiently. We have received from the developer a letter from Center School District indicating their exuberant support of proceeding forward with these joint use concepts, as well as from staff and the developer. It's a good thing to do. We're all supportive of that. The underlying areas, and it's easier to illustrate up here, so where the, where there was a, where there was a mini park proposed, you can see now it's eliminated. But the underlying and surrounding land use, and that one, the light yellow, is low-density residential, they're proposing to rezone back to those underlying uses. And I will keep reiterating, they're not proposing any increases in residential units at all. We're keeping the same capacity. So essentially, it disperses those units across the greater land area and lowers a little bit the overall density. The applicant proposes to create a park and rec, an independent park, excuse me, an independent park and recreation district. The county is not necessarily the, and I'll look toward Andy to correct me. We don't provide active park programs and things like that. So the independent park district that they're hoping to create would absorb those rec programs and operation and maintenance of those park facilities ultimately. In terms of the trails, let me flip back to my notes. There's some elimination of what I would call more redundancies. There's actually quite a robust trail program, which includes bike paths, multipurpose trails that is proposed. The applicant looked at ways to eliminate redundancies and be more efficient in that trail program. But they did seek opportunities to expand. You'll notice on, I'm going to flip to another map. Up here is the original proposal and down here is the revised. And you can see in these areas where there's gaps, that the applicant worked hard, concert with staff, of finding ways to fill those multipurpose trail gaps that created a much better circulation and staff. Is very supportive of that. They've also found ways, I believe right here, to interject some north-south connectors in terms of the trails into the program as well. And staff was supportive of the changes. It still creates a very robust, you know, trail and circulation program within the plan area, but does provide for some efficiencies and ultimately savings in costs, particularly with the elimination of the paseos and et cetera. And from a transportation point of view, they're proposing to reduce the landscaped median on baseline and Watt Avenue from what was originally approved at 20 feet down to 14 feet. And as mentioned before, we do have the Sierra Vista plan that's kind of northeast, that's in the city of Roseville. And that matches up with what is proposed in that plan as well, so it'd be consistent across. In addition, they're proposing to eliminate the pedestrian over crossing bridge at baseline road that was not required in Sierra Vista. And so they're proposing to eliminate that. And in the environmental document, we've looked at traffic and making sure that that works correctly. And staff is supportive of that elimination as well. There is one land use, largely land use change, and it's up in here. There was a five-acre parcel that was rec, recreation parcel, that's now proposed for rezone to high-density residential. Again, not proposing to increase any units, so the units up here in that brown, we'll spread those units across the greater area. But that is one of the rezones up in the town center that they're proposing with this application. So in terms of the park acreage, just to summarize a little bit, they're proposing to reduce it from 210, 210 acres, down to 159 acres, keeping in mind there is an in-loofe component to support joint use facilities. Open space is slightly reduced, although it's still quite robust, from 709 acres down to 692.8 acres. The trail program and stuff have slight reductions as well. We're looking at 43.6 acre, my, excuse me, it's 43.6 miles down to 35.1 miles. So there are some slight reductions when we eliminate those redundancies. However, in terms of the multipurpose trail, that was the one that went around the plan area. That's about 7.2 miles. And they did work with everybody and found a way to enhance that trail connection, which we were happy with. Kind of the next is where do we go from here? I think the purpose of today was to outline those changes that are proposed, included in your package was the project description. The project description also goes into detail about the financing side. On December 10th, we had a policy meeting at our Board of Direct, our Board of Supervisors, excuse me, where they sought some policy direction on public facilities, looking at efficiencies and how we reprogram those facilities in terms of the new economy that's out there and working with the developers. So a lot of those financial details are related to that side. Overall, the proposed amendments, look at really creating, you know, a more financially feasible project, both from a construction and developer point of view, but also from a long-term maintenance, looking at eliminating some long-term costs and ongoing costs and providing for a more sustainable project. You know, it's always important to remember, no increase in units, no increase in the square footage of the commercial retail. Those will all remain the same. The school site locations remain the same. The berm around the SPA is still continuing onward, as well as the Locust Road circulation study, which was important during their original approval, all remains the same. There's no proposed changes with that. We have been to the West Placer MAC a couple of times and reviewed these proposed changes. Very little comment that we have received. We'll be going back to them on November 12th, the day before the planning commission meeting, seeking their recommendation for approval of these proposed changes, as well as coming back here on November 13th to the planning commission. As I stated earlier, ultimately arriving at the board on December 9th. We do have a lot of work ahead of us. We are finishing up all the specific plan amendment documents, revising the development agreement, and really working together with the development group and proceeding at a quick pace to try and get all that done. With that, we have quite a contingency of staff, as well as representatives from the developer here. If any questions, we're happy to answer them, but we will be back on November 13th.
Okay, well, good. One question I had, and it may be just a clarification. I thought I heard you say that some of the park sites that were not going to be improved were going to be left as open space. Is that what I understood?
No, in terms of the, so when they proposed to eliminate those mini parks, that park will go away and you'll just have the underlying land use, which typically was low-density residential. On the open space areas, there were some slight reductions in that. It went from 709 acres to about, down to about roughly 693 on average. So there was a little bit reduction there.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Anyone else have questions? Michelle? Okay, good job.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, well, what we'll do then is we'll open it up to public comment at this time and any. I'm sorry, you're right. The applicant, would they care to comment first so we?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Tim Tarran. I'm here today on behalf of the Placer Vineyard Owners Group. Kent McDiarmid is the project manager for that group. He's here, available to answer questions as well. And Mike Smith, who's our lead engineer planner from McKean-Santa, is also here. We have two owner reps, Julie Hansen, who represents AKT Properties, and Ellen Hirsch, who represents LDK Properties, are also here, obviously very interested in this whole discussion. This obviously is a project which has evolved over time, and we've been at it a long time. But as you can tell, we're adamant that we're going to see it through. We're very excited about where we are now and where this is going. And we very much appreciate your consideration of these tweaks, this fine tuning that we're doing now, most of which, as Michelle noted, came as a result of lessons that we learned through the recession that we had just to be more efficient. We did not want to sacrifice quality, but we needed to leave no stone unturned to make sure that what we were doing was going to be feasible and sustainable. And we think we're rapidly approaching that goal now. Michelle gave you a very great summary of the changes that are being proposed. We want to take this opportunity to staff, to thank staff, and particularly Michelle, for the great work that they've been doing with us, the patience that they've exhibited with us, and the tenacity that they've shown as well to get us where we need to be. I just have a couple of filling comments, just for clarification purposes. One of which is, Michelle mentioned that multipurpose trail that rings the property. When she says multipurpose, I want to make sure that you know that includes equestrian uses. That was important to the SPA residents to the west, because a lot of them have horses. And that trail now goes uninterrupted all the way to Gibson Ranch, which is in Sacramento County, but adjacent to the project, so that they can access those facilities there, as well as enjoy the trail. The other thing I wanted to point out, can't get the map back. Michelle, I don't know how to do that. Thank you. One more? There you go. So there originally was a recreation center planned here. And Michelle mentioned that that recreation center was going to be consolidated with some other public use facilities. I'm not sure. I heard, maybe she did say, but just emphasize, that's going to be moved over to this west park area here. That's where that's going to be located. We think that's really going to be a great facility, by the way. So that's all I have. We're happy to answer any other questions you may have. And we look forward to seeing you again on November 13th.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Go ahead.
I think you just answered one question.
Okay.
Because I was a little confused on the recreation center at Town Center and it was going to be high density. But yeah, I think you just answered it's moving over.
It's moving over, yes. And the area that was, where it was located is being rezoned to high density, consistent with the adjacent uses.
Okay, and this question, I guess, is, you know, I was reading in the report where there's a lot of the public facilities are, you're going to, the developers are going to put money in for the county to, I guess, build those public facilities?
Well, that's a combination of things. We're going to be building a lot of facilities. But yes, we're going to be paying fees and other financing mechanisms that'll be documented in the development agreement, which you'll see in November 13th. And then the county will be building some facilities as well. That's correct.
Okay, so I guess when we see the development agreement, then we'll know which is which and.
Yeah, you'll see a much more detail on that.
Okay. I'll have my answer.
Okay, sure. We'll come prepared to answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, there's no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others of your group that want to speak, or is that you concluded, I guess? Okay. Is there anyone in the public, then, that would care to come forward and comment at this point? Please come to the microphone. Holy cow. Sure, okay. Well, you must have done a great job, Michelle. I guess I have a question for you, and that is, are all these changes that we're hearing that are coming forward, does the county or staff pretty much support those?
I would say yes. We've all worked quite diligently, and I think Tim mentioned the word tenacity. I think tenacity on both sides, to come and get where we are today. We've all made compromises, but we're supportive of the trail plan, we're working through the financing plan and the proposed changes.
Okay. Any other questions, Michelle?
And to tag on to Tim's comment, to make sure it's clear, the developer will be responsible of constructing all those neighborhood parks, trails. So they are taking on quite a bit of that system as well.
It sounds like the development agreement is going to be a piece of work. A lot of, a lot of issues to resolve. So that's going to be, I'm not sure what our role will play. Will we review the development agreement as well or not?
Yes. Under our ordinance, the planning commission reviews the development agreement and makes a recommendation to the board.
Okay.
Maybe I have one more question.
Okay, Richard?
Yeah, on the parks, you were saying the county doesn't have parks?
We have parks. We typically, and Andy Fisher's here from the park department to answer any specific questions. We certainly have parks. We typically don't have more of an active rec program.
Yeah, that would be good. Maybe if Andy Fisher could give us a little bit of a view of the park system that's being developed?
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
Andy Fisher with the County Facility Services Parks Division. Joy to be in front of you again. It's been quite a while. They're right. It has been a tenacious. They're right, it has been a tenacious year that we've worked on this, and I do agree that we've made great progress, and we're in, I think, substantial agreement with where we're going right now. Down to working out the smaller issues. A month ago, I'd have given you a different answer to that, but I think we've made some really good headway on where we're going now. And so we're really pleased. To get to the question at hand, what the county has not done, and what has not been part of our charter, is running rec programs. So, you know, hiring the folks that run the yoga programs and the swim teams and the things like that. That's what the county has not done before. There is a general plan amendment that goes back years that said the county would not do that unless we entered into a specific agreement that contained those programs, which this would, this does. So it is, it could be part of our charter, but the proposal before us is to form an independent district that would maintain open space, parks, trails, and run those rec programs that would come along quite a ways into the future. I think by the time the facilities were there to run the rec programs, it'd be about halfway into the development, about the 6,000th unit or more. So it is somewhat into the future, but right now, we're really information gathering. We haven't done, we haven't gone through the LAFCO process to form a district. So we're really trying to get educated on what that looks like, what the best form would be like, if that's the best way to go, and the timing. So those are all, those are all questions that we're working very hard on right now, and what that district formation would look like.
Will they be CSAs, is that the kind of...
Well, there's a, a funding district would be either a CFA, CSA, County Service Area Zona Benefit, or a CFD. Those are the two proposals, those would be the funding districts. But what we're talking about here is a governance district, so it would be a district with its own board that would govern the maintenance and recreational programming at Placer Vineyards.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other questions, my commissioners? It looks like we have done our best here today to get everything out, and it seems like a pretty good project at this point, reshaping at this juncture. Thank you for your comments, and I believe that concludes our exercise here today. And I want to thank you all for coming and participating, and it looks like you've been working hard, been good. You were giving each a star on your forehead for doing a good job. It's gotta be a Herculean project to try to get your arms around, I don't envy you. And we'll look forward to hopefully seeing you soon. Okay. 13th, I guess, yeah. Okay, we're adjourned.